To the September sixteenth meeting of the Danville Boyle County Board of Adjustments. We've got a pretty small list to go over tonight. First thing though is approval of the minutes from the last meeting.
Second.
First by Mike, second by Pat. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Alrighty. Moving on, we have one public hearing this evening. Mrs. Kristy Kerr has applied for a conditional use permit to operate an in-home daycare facility in her residence at, on point three four acres of land known as ten sixty-eight Argyle Drive in Danville. Property is zoned R one A and we will let Hannah Gray give us the details of that.
Thank you. So yes, she applied for a conditional use permit to operate an in-home daycare facility. In her home, this plot is currently zoned R one A, single-family residential. And you can see just how it's zoned right there. And so one note that I did want to make on this is the zoning ordinance references under specific use standards. And so these are the, sorry, backing up a little bit. This is the request. Requesting a C P to operate an in-home childcare business. Daycare will not serve more than six children who are not related to me. Each day, children will arrive with their parents and then be picked up. And there, also to note, there is an HOA with this plot of land. So that's just something to note for y'all. And so the specific use standards, this is how the plot of land falls in the use regulations. So it's conditionally permitted, but with the specific use standards. And so these are those standards. And each one of these, so because it falls under five point two point two A, under the childcare, number four, all of the five point two point two B standards need to be met. So that's just something to note on the requirements. And this is just kind of Google Earth of the house, just to give you a picture. And so I think that is all I have for you on that background information. But I think my staff analysis in the staff report, I mean, I kind of give a longer staff analysis, but to kind of sum it up, it's, I would just, what's the word? Note that because it is an HOA and a R one A, there are just specific requirements that need to be met.
Any questions for Hannah? Just so everybody knows, tonight, the way that this meeting will work, we are going to hear from the applicant and then there will be ample time for anybody here to speak for or against her request. And after everybody's been given a chance to be heard, we will close the public hearing. We will deliberate as a board and come to our decision at that point. So at this point, we will allow the applicant to come to the mic and let us know what she's got going on.
Hello, I'm Kristy Kerr and I have worked in early childhood education for twenty-plus years as a teacher and also I've had in-home daycares in other states. But upon moving to Kentucky, I worked in a public school for a number of years and then wanted to stay at home and thought this would be a good option. When I asked around, they, I've been told over and over again about the need for childcare in Kentucky in general, but specifically in Danville. I've had numerous people contact me already and said there's waiting lists at every daycare and they are just interested in knowing, you know, a better option. And the childcare assistance, when I contacted them to help go through this process, she said I would be the only state-certified in-home daycare in Danville at this time if I get the approval and meet all the requirements. So there's definitely a need for that. Being state-approved allows me to go from three students, children in my home to six. I've talked to lots of people and it is tricky if you are, a lot of people need part-time, which I do offer. Daycare centers make you pay for the whole week and a lot of parents can't afford that, but they can afford like two or three days and that's what they need. So I've been, you know, piecing together people to try to fill spots. You know, I have one that comes on Tuesday and Thursday and one that comes Monday, Wednesday, Friday to create one spot. So that's also filling a big need and allowing to serve more people. My hours are going to be generally seven to five, pretty standard work hours. I do adjust a little bit, give or take a little depending on the parents. If somebody has to be at work at seven, then I'll open my doors a little bit early for them. This, I will, the state requires you to carry extra insurance. So once you get state-approved, then I get, you know, a commercial insurance policy to cover that. The children arrive at standard ti- staggered times throughout the day depending on when their parents need care. Also pickup is the same. So it's not like all kids come at the exact same time and leave at the exact same time. And in truth, I don't actually plan to try to fill all six spots. I try to plan to have maybe about four, but it may be that some days I need to have five and some days I might have three, just depending on what the family needs are. Or it may be that like a family has a kindergarten or a first grader who would ride the bus to my house after school for two hours, but they also have, you know, a smaller child that needs all day. So that just gives me some wiggle room in there instead of trying to only keep it down to three. It gives me a little bit of wiggle room. Do you have questions for me at this time?
With the state licensing requirements, are you aware of any requirement to have a sign for your daycare?
No, there should not be. I don't believe so.
Did you, what'd you say your standard times was?
My standard time, what I'm hoping for is between seven AM and five PM.
Monday through Friday or seven days a week?
Monday through Friday.
So no weekends?
No.
Anybody else have questions? I guess we're good for right now. Anybody, and as far as public input, everybody would need to come to the microphone. Please tell us your name and where you live. And we will now open to anybody who is willing to speak in favor of her motion or her request. Anybody?
Hello, my name is Rick Rudd. I live next door at ten sixty-four Argyle Drive. Her driveway is right next to my yard. So we're probably the most visible neighbors to the Currs, I would think. I just want to speak in favor of Kristy. I know she and her husband to be very high ethical standard people. I think they will work very hard to do what they say they will do, to abide by any regulations or any restrictions or any kind of problem that might occur. They would work hard to alleviate and address any issues that people have. I can't see, from what I see up above me on the, on the screen, that there would be anything detrimental to public health, safety, or welfare. I would think it would increase public safety and welfare and health because it provides a much-needed service for young parents, for their children. I can't see how it would contribute toward overburdening public infrastructure. And I can't see it increasing traffic enough for really the neighbors to even notice. One thing I thought about is Kristy, in having three kids in public schools, involved in public school activities, has been running in and out of the neighborhood like most parents have to do, six or eight times a day. Makes me tired just to watch. She won't be doing that now. So that will offset some of the cars coming in and out. So I, I want to voice my absolute support and anything I can do, I'm willing to do. Any questions, anybody wants to ask me, I'm willing to try to answer.
Thank you. Anybody else to speak in favor of the applicant? Anybody who would like to speak in opposition? Please come forward at this time.
My name is John Dalton. I am the HOA president for Argyle Neighborhood Association. I want to commend her first of all for trying to do things the right way. You know, it was wonderful to see her reply and get all the things in line. Unfortunately, with our bylaws, they are single residence for residential only. That's what our bylaws have stated. And that's just what we came down to. Personally, it's one thing, HOA is another thing. And so the stance by the HOA itself is a no by the, the members of the, or the board, me being the president. And the other, a lot of other members are here and they have more information that they would like to provide and all that. Do you have any questions for me?
I think I'll reserve mine until I hear from the other board members. Anybody else? Anybody else like to speak?
Yes. I am here this afternoon along with my wife, Linda Singler. I am Bill Singler. We are adjacent property owners to this, to the proposal, and we are opposed to the conditional use permit because a daycare business is not zoned, is zoned, but it is not approved in our deed of restrictions. I've got some exhibits here.
So in Exhibit one of the packet I just gave you, the Argyle subdivision has a deed of restriction. And it states, whereas said owner shall desire to protect said subdivision by appropriate restrictions as to sale, use, and improvement, and to make Argyle subdivision more desirable to residential purposes. Now therefore, the owners hereby oppose upon all the lots in the said subdivision this covenant running with the land and make the same subject to the following restrictions. All lots in Argyle subdivision shall be used solely and exclusively for single-family residential purposes. That's in Exhibit one. In Exhibit two, the mailed notices, planning zoning also needs to be, know that the applicant did not, failed to fulfill the requirements of the notice to all adjacent property owners. Two lots in the Lennox subdivision are adjacent. Tim and Jo Noel at one oh nine Aberdeen Drive did not receive a notice. And I have a copy of the letter from the Noels stating that they were not aware of this meeting whatsoever and that they are opposed to the conditional use permit. I have not made contact with the other lot at one oh four Wellington Court. They are the backside of Argyle. We're, we're Atlantic joints.
Our policy is to mail notices of this to the adjacent landowners with the address on record. And it's possible they just did not receive it because their address for some reason was not correct there. So that may be the reason for that.
Okay. 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 In Exhibit three that I gave you, the copy of the application for the conditional use permit that was provided, it was very brief, only including a copy of the final plat. And that does not meet the seventeen application, the seventeen application requirements that that requirement has. Now, maybe they were provided separately, but we only have a copy of the plat associated with the request. I don't have a copy of the request in there.
I'm sorry?
I don't have a copy of the applicant's request in there. I just, in fact, about the seventeen requirements, which are very detailed. Also, the permit request states that I have confirmed with my HOA that this business is permitted. Well, you've just heard that this is not correct. It is in the deed of restrictions that it's single-family residential only.
Has the HOA board got together and voted on this being definitely?
We had a discussion.
You had a discussion, but did you make a motion or did you?
We haven't had a full meeting to do that. Our actual schedule.
Make the motion now, sir.
We haven't had, well, Sunday is our annual meeting. We do it once, once a year. So there was no real time to do that. And we got, the three of us got together, the president, the treasurer, and the secretary, and reached out with some help with the other people and getting some legal advice on it and looking at our bylaws. And that was the advice we were given is what I basically stated.
Did the bylaws state that this is not allowed?
It's not allowed because it's for residential.
How did she get the feeling in the application that says it was allowed by the HOA rules?
I don't see where there was anything where it said that. I didn't tell her that and I don't know who did.
Okay. I have a question for the applicant, I guess, I guess for you is, was you aware of these bylaws before you entered to your?
I have a copy of the bylaws and had read through them. But I reached out to Shelley Bigelow, who is our HOA secretary, on August sixth, before I started any of the process, even contacting anybody about doing it, and asked, I said, I just wanted to confirm that nothing in our bylaws restricts me from opening an in-home daycare that is limited to six children under the age of six who are not related. This is a small in-home setup, not a daycare center. And she wrote me back and said, I do not see anything that prevents this. Good luck. That is why I said my HOA is approved because I had reached out and asked. So I didn't know. And I do know that there are other businesses in our neighborhood. So I didn't realize that, like, that's why I asked her specifically about a daycare.
What other businesses?
I just, I don't know exactly all of them. I just know that other people have businesses in our neighborhood that run things in our, their houses too.
Okay. Sir, I'm sorry, I cut you off earlier. If you want to continue speaking.
Okay. The Exhibit four, I think, just says that Kentucky case law authority, where courts have ruled in favor of deed restrictions over zoning approval. So it seems to me that, that Berry versus Hemplett case is very specific about the, how final deed of restrictions are. To conclude, the daycare is not consistent with the intent of the statement for the subdivision in which it is located and will not be compatible with existing uses to or near the property. The conditional use application should not be used to get around the deed of restriction. Last but not least, it will adversely affect the neighborhood that has been protected by this deed of restriction for, since nineteen sixty-eight. The Wallises created this. So it's been around a while and it has served Argyle very well.
I have a question.
Yes.
Are you aware of any other businesses in the neighborhood?
I was not at, at the beginning. I am now.
Bill?
But no other business has asked for a conditional use permit, to my knowledge.
Bill, don't you want those to stand?
Yes. Okay. There are numerous Argyle people here that are opposed. So rather than just me thinking it's me, maybe anybody opposed to this?
Yeah, anybody else would like to speak would be given a chance. One at a time, please.
Before you do that, sir, all the people that stood, are any of you aware of any business in the neighborhood?
No.
Nobody?
There have been some names called since this started.
Go ahead, sir.
I can state to that just real quick. Like everyone says.
Sorry, will you, like, speak to the microphone?
Come to the microphone.
I didn't know there were any in there. Apparently there are. And that's something that we'll, we would be handling depending on how this goes.
If it's a, yeah, I'm not here to dictate rules.
Right, no, I get that.
For your neighborhood, but if it's an in-home business, it doesn't require a conditional use permit, like work from home or something like that, that's different situation.
Yeah, it wouldn't be like a work, I'm an employee working from home. It'd be an actual, you know, people do come and go on occasion or whatever.
Yeah.
That's, I think, more of the concern than anything else, the liability that, you know, Argyle could be put in if someone was to get hurt on the street or crossing somebody's yard. And then, you know, that kind of stuff is, you know, a lot of the concerns, you know, some people have a concern of traffic if they're in that, that part of that neighborhood, part of the neighborhood. But the other businesses will have to address, again, depending on how this goes. The biggest concern when we, the three of us were talking about it, does it open Pandora's box?
Yeah, and just, I don't want to get into weeds of, of the other residents that are doing there.
Right.
I would just say that if there are, you know, businesses that are operating outside of the rules and they don't have a conditional use permit, you can contact.
Yes.
Ms. Gray and.
Yes.
She will help with that.
Yes. Thank you, sir.
My name's Scott Russell. I'm an adjacent property owner at ten ninety Glendale Court across the street. I support what Mr. Singler said in his prepared statement and documents. I was aware of these before the meeting, but I just wanted to say as a adjacent property owner, I agree with those concerns. There's also some potential for traffic, box trucks, mowers, everything else. It can be a dangerous situation put in place. There's no sidewalks, lot of kids walk, everything else. And, you know, there's very little police out there. There's no reason to be. But speed is an issue on our side of the subdivision. And this could put, generally put people in jeopardy at times. And that's all I really want to say. Thank you.
Sure.
I have one thing I'd like to make.
Please come to the microphone to.
I will.
Thank you.
My name is Deidre Benpaul and I'm probably the oldest person in the neighborhood. I've been there for forty years or so. So I speak with some historical knowledge of the subdivision. There's only one other case I know, and it's not a reported court of appeals case. It's a local case whereby Argyle filed an injunctionative relief petition in circuit court and asked that a dentist who had been operating out of his home be enjoined from continuing to operate as a dentist out of his residence. And that case, again, did not go to the court of appeals. He was simply enjoined by the circuit.
I'm sorry, will you make sure to speak into the microphone for the record, please?
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
He was simply enjoined from the practice of dentistry out of his home. Could you not hear me? I'm sorry. Any questions on that case?
When was that?
That was probably in nineteen seventy-three because I moved here in seventy-four.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I'm Bernard Montgomery. I'm the treasurer of Argyle Association, here with my wife, Carolyn. Several years ago, when we were living in a multi-story house and due to our age and some health issues, we decided it was time for us to downsize. So we began looking and I did my research on this. And we were needing a one-story ranch house. Found one in Argyle, just what we needed. And I did my research. And one of the reasons we bought it was because of the restriction that's already been presented, that all lots in Argyle subdivisions shall be used solely and exclusively for single-family residential purposes. So we bought it and made that investment and made considerable investments since. And we'd like it to be in the nice quiet subdivision that it is and would love to keep it that way. And, you know, we've heard, and I believe everything this young lady has said about what she plans to do with, with, with her business, I respect that. But one of my concerns is, you know, as Deidre stated, it's already been tested once and our restriction has stood. My concern is, you know, if we begin to make exceptions, what might come next? You know, of course, I mean, I trust you gentlemen here to, you know, to take care of those for us. But that's my big concern is I hate to see this get started and move in that direction where who knows what comes next, you know. So. And one more thing on the, on the statement, kind of in question here about the HOA saying okay for this, that is only an opinion. That was, there was not anything passed by the HOA supporting it.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
My name is Harold Osborne. I live at eleven twenty-one Sterling Drive. As most of y'all know, Sterling Drive connects to Argyle, a big circle. So I'm, I'm in the same neighborhood. But I, I came here about seven years ago. And like Bernard, I was wanting to make sure it's a residential community only because I came from eastern Kentucky, a lot of coal trucks there. Well, I bought a house in eastern Kentucky and in a couple days, I started having coal trucks parked in front of my house. That, it was a subdivision right next to a hospital, so I did not expect that. So I am concerned about parking. But let me mention more directly, nobody else mentioned, I'm a runner. And I was out there at six thirty this morning to seven thirty. It was dark. And there was a woman walking two dogs and I come upon her, couldn't hardly see her. So I'm trying to imagine, you know, cars and so forth. But there's center college students that are out there almost every morning. There's some high school students in the summertime and so forth. So I am concerned about the safety and traffic. And I helped Bernard water entrance, the flowers and so forth. And there is tremendous traffic. Anytime that we're out there already, tremendous traffic. So I just wanted to state that I, I am for keeping it a residence only. And no offense to anybody, that's still my position, no matter what business might be talked about. And I've enjoyed it these seven years. I'd like to continue. And if anything, find a way to cut down on traffic. But anyhow, that, that's my position. And thank you for your time. If you have a question.
Thanks, sir.
Okay.
Anybody else?
Hello, my name is Bill Hibbs. I live on Argyle Drive also. And I've been a resident there for about twenty-five years. for about 25 years. And it is a HOA, and I may not agree with everything that's in it, but I abide by it because I knew that's what it was when I purchased the property. And I would like to keep it the same. I'm not a runner like Harold, but I do walk, and I have a dog, too. There's no sidewalks around Argyle or Sterling. You're in the street. My main concern is traffic, to be quite honest with you. The days are getting shorter. I'm finding myself out there in the dark also. As far as businesses are concerned, I don't really want to open up an opportunity for any businesses to come into the residential area. It's one of the things I liked about it. And again, that's just my opinion, but I want to make sure it was heard also today.
Thanks, sir. Anybody else?
Hello, I'm Candace Yates. I actually live directly in front of her, and I, as well as others, are frequent flyers in the neighborhood as far as going and coming. I have young children. They're highly involved in sports activities. I have a young driver herself that's learning. You know, you stay on your side of the road. Traffic is a lot in our neighborhood. I exercise around the neighborhood. A lot of us like to stop and speak to one another. Our social time sometimes is speaking to each other in the road, basically, because we have no sidewalks or stepping into someone's yard. But basically, you pull out of her drive, you are in my drive once you are out of the street. So one of my circular drive areas is directly in front of hers. And I like them, even if you don't abide by the rules. I'm a rule follower. You must follow the rules. That's what we signed on for. That's what we pay our HOA fee. And you appreciate those things because when you drive into other neighborhoods and see things, you're like, oh, I'm so glad that our neighborhood is protected by those rules so that we live in a nice neighborhood. I have lived there for about 24 years. You know, a lot of neighbors go and come, but it is always brought to everyone's attention that we do have rules. So if you purchase the home, these are the rules you abide by. So, and I appreciate everyone in our neighborhood, the HOA, the board, everyone that does flowers. You know, we pay our HOA fee to help keep the lights in the neighborhood. However, you know, like they mentioned, it is getting dark sooner, so therefore it's harder to see. I always tell my own child now that she's driving on her own, make sure you drive slow because it is hard to see. We went walking last night, for example, and it's dark. So, you know, I'm always like, hey, scoot over, make sure you don't get ran over. So anyways, our side of the neighborhood is one of the more frequent traffic areas compared to Sterling on the other side of the circle. So I feel like our neighborhood, we've got Lenock drivers coming through our neighborhood to get home and so on. So it is, there is a lot of traffic just among the people that own our homes and live there ourselves. So, thank you. I appreciate y'all listening.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anybody else? Having no one else, we will close the public hearing portion and begin our deliberation. Sir?
I'd like to ask Henry Toll Pine on the deed restriction issue.
I'm ready to offer some analysis on that, but I didn't know if the board wanted to hear from the applicant to respond to any of what's been offered. I know we sometimes do that. Or if the applicant had anything to offer in response.
Absolutely, yeah. If you want a chance to rebut some of the points brought up.
Mostly with the traffic. I think, like Rick posed, my kids, two of my kids are now in college, so there's a lot less running around. And the other one is homeschooling this year, so I don't even have him. He's only in a few small activities. My husband also drives over the road now, too, so he's also gone all week. So just our family not driving in and out, it's been wonderful to be at home all day, every day, and only leaving once a day maybe compared. So that automatically takes out three or four cars, which would replace the families that are coming in. So I understand that, and I totally understand the restriction on the businesses. If I would have realized that's exactly what it meant in the bylaws, I would never have pursued it. But given that I thought that some businesses were allowed, then I thought this is just a small, not like somebody making appointments and coming and going all the time. It's mostly like if my daughter was a babysitter and kids got dropped off for that. So didn't realize that. There was differences. So.
Thank you, ma'am.
To Mr. Brown's question about these restrictions, I talked to your director about this yesterday and whether a matter like this can go forward when we have these restrictions in front of us. I think the first question that you all are asked when you look at a conditional use permit is, how does this affect the character of the zone? Are there any conditions that we can put on it to control detrimental effects? And I think that deed restrictions can speak to what the character of the zone is. So that's something you can talk about. We have sometimes taken the position that these are essentially a contract of private documents to be enforced by private parties and not by this board, and I still think that that is the case. There is a statute that says, you know, where there's a higher standard in restrictions or covenants than what is in the zoning ordinance, the planning commission shall enforce that higher standard. Now, that to me sounds more like a dimensional question where you're talking about setbacks or something. You know, I'm not sure if you can equate higher with more restrictive or prohibitive, but that statute is out there. The last thing that I think weighs into this is when you have these kinds of restrictions.
Henry, can you speak closer to the microphone? Lighty there, I couldn't hear you.
Do I need to start again? Okay.
Thank you.
There can be a question about the enforceability of these regulations. You know, the first document we have is from 1969 or earlier than that, and they can sometimes lap. I see where these have been renewed. There can be questions about their interpretation, and I think that those questions should be allowed to be aired in this forum, and I think the board should not endeavor to decide upon those questions of interpretation. And there can be, when you talk about enforceability, there can be issues of waiver where, you know, if there are multiple businesses that are being operated in Argyle Woods, does that condition still apply? So for these reasons, because we may have a piece of paper, but we don't know what the effect on the ground is, that's why I thought that this board should hear it. All of that said, I didn't know if I heard Ms. Kerr saying that she would not have applied based on what this restriction is. I think what I want to know is your intent of whether or not you'd like to go forward with this.
Well, I think if it's decided that it's allowed, I would prefer to go forward because it's my livelihood. But if it's, you know, come to the attention that that type of a business is not allowed to be held in there, in our, I mean, I don't want to go against our bylaws. I wasn't trying to like slip in some rule or anything like that. That's why I had asked, like, my interpretation was that, like, it's not a commercial business, so it wasn't, you know, it's not one you have to get a business license and all of that for. So I didn't realize that it would fall under that same category.
If I'm correct, our board could still approve the conditional use permit, but the housing authority would have the option to file suit in court to.
They could appeal that decision. They could also file a suit to enforce their restrictions against it. The benefit of that suit is we would have the benches answer on whether or not the restrictions, as they're currently recorded, apply and prohibit this particular use.
Yeah.
I think that the board is welcome to respond to this, ignore this advice, but I think we would entertain a risk by approving this use where it appears to be prohibited by the restrictions. The applicant has not raised a challenge to the restrictions. I think if we had some kind of court order or dispensations from the HOA permitting you to do this, then that could be something that could justify approval. But when we are facing these restrictions, I think there could be some risk to it.
This is a possible solution. The HOA annual meeting is this Sunday, that I hear. We could table this, not kill your chances at this point, and you can work with the HOA to see if you can, you know, get approval from them, come back. We could untable it next month and either approve it or deny it then. I would hate for us to just say no without, you know, your HOA getting together and being hard, fast on it. So that would be my recommendation.
That's what I was going to say. It sounds like this is a discussion that maybe needs to happen at the HOA level for lots of reasons. And so I wouldn't want to necessarily cancel my chances, but it also needs to come from them first because, like I said, if they would have said, no, we're not allowed to have that kind of a business, then I would have said, okay, I need to do something different.
If we said no right now, then your chances would be done. If we said yes right now, then you're open to a lawsuit.
Yeah, I don't want any lawsuits.
Then you've got the chance to work with your HOA and move forward from there. Sound like a good idea?
Yes.
All right.
Sir, Mr. Sutton, are you suggesting?
Please come to the microphone.
Simply are you suggesting that the HOA negotiate with the applicant?
Is that the suggestion?
No, ma'am. I'm saying if you have your annual meeting this weekend, it is up to you all to get together and hear her if you want to. And if you want to make sure that your bylaws prohibit this, then that would be your opportunity to do so before we move forward.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Sound good, Henry?
Yes, sir. So the appropriate thing, if the board's inclined, would be a motion to table?
Anybody?
So moved.
Second.
Did you get that, Hannah?
I'm going to go back on the video and get that. Yes.
All right. We've got a motion second. Any discussion on this? All in favor of the table? Anybody opposed? Motion carries. All righty, we will table this till next month. Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Thank you all for your time here this evening. Any other old business?
None today.
How about any new business?
There is new business. Thank you for asking. Oh, my gosh. We're going to talk about signs today. Does anybody want to stick around and talk about signs? No? Okay, that makes sense.
Signs?
We're going to talk about a sign that I saw. What was it? Baker something or other? What was that catchy phrase?
Thanks, sir. No, sir, it's, no. I think that our office looks at those. Our office looks at the plat, yeah. Yeah, yeah. I don't know. But appreciate you being here this evening. We've still got some business to discuss. All right, thank you, sir, so much. Ladies and gentlemen, we still have business to discuss. If you don't mind taking your conversation out to the hallway. Thank you.
It's going to be boring after you leave, so don't worry.
Bernard? Get your ass out of here.
Hannah, you were saying something about signs.
Okay, I saw this sign on the side of the road. No, so.
I have to say Willie Baker auctioneer.
But it was such a good phrase. So we were going to see if you all have any recommendations for the Planning and Zoning Commission, how do I say this, to update our zoning ordinances in regards to sign because we have noticed the update in sign variances that you all have granted in 2025 compared to 2024 and 2023. So we would like to know if you all have any advice, recommendations for the Planning and Zoning Commission for their ordinances to make y'all's life easier. Is your mic on? Yes, please.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
What about now?
Almost ate the mic. Anyways, I think we need to update something on the percentage versus the facade. Because that kind of leaves it wide open, and I think you would, it doesn't fit. It's not a mold that perfectly fits every sign. So right now, the ordinance is, is it 8%?
10%.
Or 10% of the facade. So if you've got a 9,000 square foot facade, you can only have a.
900 square foot.
900 square foot sign, which is, I would think, pretty small for that size. Just my opinion. Just like the Drake sign, it's far bigger than that, right?
Yeah.
But nothing was ever said about that, so we've kind of set a precedence there.
Well, I think. I think the whole sign issue is a tricky incident anyway. I mean, I'm still riding down Fourth Street, and I still see an ice cream sign sitting on the building of the week.
It doesn't have the arrow anymore. It's not directing traffic, it's just advertising.
Nice point, Mr. President.
I mean, yeah. Do you have recommendations? Oh, sorry, Preston?
I've got a hangup here. I'm aware of a business that now uses 100% of their sign, of their frontage, for signage. That's way, to my mind, outside of what we expect in our community.
Let's not keep it a secret. We're all friends here. Who is it? What business?
This is being livestreamed. I just don't know if we need to.
Was that a question to me?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's the still.
It's what?
The still.
Oh, okay. Oh, yeah. Yeah.
100% all across their facade that faces the bypass. And they came before us several months ago with a question about that. I can't remember the details, but we made a decision that was appropriate at the time. But when I drive by now, I see 100% signage.
I don't remember that.
I don't, not in my tenure.
Their sign essentially is not bordered. It is on the side of the building, and there's no definition of, for the sign itself. It's just, it's just there on the side of the building. So I can understand why Preston would say that it's on the whole building because frankly, it is.
Yeah.
Well, to my, I mean, I know what you're talking about, but it's not actually a sign. It's just painted on the building, so you can't say it's a sign if it's actually painted on the building.
Hmm, I disagree with that to some extent.
That's part of the discussion. This question to you all tonight comes from the Planning Commission's Advisory Committee looking into the sign ordinance, and they did that because months ago, you all, as one of your motions on these variances, asked for some clarification and cleanup from the Planning Commission.
I remember that.
As far as specific instances, I think it would be best maybe to curtail discussion of that now. If there's an offender out there, then there should be a complaint process, and we should approach it that way. I think that one of the items that the Planning Commission Subcommittee was talking about was tailoring, fixing our definition of sign to address this kind of idea of what is a sign? Is it really 100% of the frontage? The reason that I think that we sent that recommendation to the Planning Commission is because, one, we were having lots of variances being requested on signs, and, two, there was some question about the clarity of our standard, 96 square feet or 10% of the facade, whichever is greater. So that seems like a usable standard to me. If you disagree, please say the word and we'll get it fixed. If you all think that there should be some change in the way that we measure these things, that's the kind of input that the committee definitely would like to hear.
I think the interpretation needs to be clarified. So it's 10% of the facade or. So it's ten percent of the facade or, or more or less?
And specify what is a sign? Painted, wall, mounted, all of that.
I think the, the one thing I would think that we would need to be careful of is some of the variances that have been approved had good reason for them, that we don't want to restrict the ability to say, yes, that's, that's a normal, good call for it.
That is a fact.
Yep. But by the same token, yes, we, we do have to do a lot of variances, it seems like, for them, so.
I think any adjustment that we make to this table, which has specified what the signs are supposed to look like, it would not restrict your discretion on those types of matters. If they have that good reason, they can still come to this board. The question is, are we hearing things that really ought to be just handled in-house?
Or is there a way to clean up the ordinances so you all don't have to hear these variances? Is there, yeah, so...
What's the exact verbiage of that one ordinance in question? Because I'm having trouble remembering exactly what it says.
You haven't memorized the ordinances?
Yeah, some of them, but not this one in particular.
Ninety-six square feet or ten percent of facade, whichever is greater.
And that sounds pretty clear to me.
The reason, the reason I asked my question was because I saw it on TV. I guess everyone is not as smart. When you say sign, everybody's thinking it's an actual sign, something that you hang on, something. So I guess that's where the steel people probably thinking, we don't actually have a sign, but we own our building, so we can paint anything on our building. That's where, I think that's where they, I'm going to say that's where they probably thought.
And I've had that question before too. Is it, is it the full square sign or is it the lettering inside of the square? And so I think clarifying that too would help alleviate a lot of...
Same thing would apply with Drake, you know, they've got Drake.
Yeah.
No border, no breakup. Is that the whole building, you know?
Yeah. The, the last time we heard something that had to do with the ninety-six square feet or ten percent was for the healthcare on the bypass and they wanted some extra signage because it was hard to see. It was highway business.
Yeah.
People driving by at sixty miles an hour. So I think, you know, really the wording of the ordinance is proper. And if they want it to be more than that, then they need to come before the board so that we can determine whether it fits the characteristics of, of that particular application. Notwithstanding anybody who may be outside of, you know, proper usage at this point. If it's ten percent, if they've got a hundred thousand square foot facade, you know, ten percent is what they're allowed. And if not, then they need to come before the board. Yeah. I, I think the wording is fine. What was the other one?
Oh, I didn't have any more about signs.
Oh, just that one?
It was just that one.
Wow.
I, I appreciate that. I appreciate that, Steve. And that is exactly my point, that we have an ordinance that I think makes sense.
It, it does, yeah.
Ninety-six or ten percent. And I appreciate Mr. Henry's, Henry's idea. I will file a complaint at, at the appropriate point.
Sure.
Because as I drive by, it's clear to me that they're using a hundred percent of their facade.
It would behoove anybody on this board if they see something.
They can come and ask for a variance, but at this point, to my mind, it's out of compliance.
It would, it would behoove any of us that if we see something that doesn't fit, that is operating outside of an ordinance or...
I think that's what, I think that's the kind of thing that we are all charged to do.
Absolutely, yeah. If we let somebody slide that we, we know about, then we're ineffective as a board, certainly. Especially advertisements in the right of way. Those are the worst offenders.
They are awful and I have a plan and I'm coming after them, so just, you know, I got it.
I can't wait to see what you come up with. Send the bills to P.O. Box three eighty-two, Perryville, Kentucky, four oh four six eight.
Hannah the Hammer.
Absolutely.
I am the new Daryl Isaac, yes. Start that rumor.
Is there any other new business?
That is it for today.
All righty. Anybody like to make, Pat would like to make a motion to adjourn. Seconded by Jim. All in favor? Thank you all for being here.